And and not go into something I really don't have immediate experience in. I rather, uh, it's probably best I start with my actual um skills and and career. So. What what about you? I I don't, what what column are you looking at, Mohammed?
Uh, I'm also in management because I'm uh have a HR background.
Okay, Sandra, what about you?
So I would, I think I would like to do um. Counselor or PD would be something that I would, you know, consider.
For sure. And you have um a background and some coastal.
Yes, yeah, so I am a a counselor fellow and I do like it. Uh, but you know, I also have seen other areas and I think PD is one of the ones that I like the most. Actually, I had great experience with management officers and I have to tell you they make such a difference. Um, whatever you go is, uh, you know, it's not just working, working, working. There's so many components of. You know, your housing, your communications with your supervisors and in in general, your family, because management is um also oversees that part of. Um, so say uh family employment, so it is truly very important. So I'm glad that you guys are considering that.
I appreciate you saying that. Um, I do have a question for you. Um, after I ask Ruben, which uh, what is your column?
Uh, yeah, I I'm planning for management as well because I have been working in public sector for fifteen years. The last fifteen years in contracts. So, oh, and uh, yeah, I would consider counselor as well, but. Since I don't have any experience, I I think more leaning towards management.
Yeah, that's kind of my my same thinking. So, well, since I I want to make a big splash starting in the beginning. Is is best to start already know and and have Sandra. So you were a consul of fellow right now. How did you get into that?
Um, so there was um. Just a, you know, one of those announcements in USA jobs and I tested actually the first time I did not pass. Um, and well, the second time I passed then, after the pandemic, uh, I think that they were, um, they they called me. And I joined in twenty twenty two and I've been doing this for a couple of years now. Yeah, I have a legal background, so I think that helped me a lot too.
So what's the difference between a counselor fellow and um, I guess a foreign service officer or specialist?
So the, we do the same thing and actually we're can, we are hired as counselor officers. Um, they, wh- what is different is the hiring mechanism. Which is that we are only hired for a short period of time, for a limited um contract, which is six to ye- six, uh, sorry, five to six years. Um, that is the the main difference, but you know, once that we are at post, we do exactly the same job, right? We. We interview, we help American citizens, we learn, we everything, we go to congen, so. But our main goal is to do uh interviews, right?
For sure.
Yeah.
So have you been, have you been going out in other missions as well or working in US only?
No, I am actually currently in Bogota in Colombia. I've been in Monterrey and I'm actually bidding right now for my next post and after that. I'm hoping that before my next post, you know, I can get into as an FSO. There are other mechanisms that are currently being tried out, you know, piloted to see if um. Fellows can transfer to the Foreign Service. Uh, but honestly, I don't want to keep on waiting. I I just want to try it on my own and whatever works, works. We'll see.
Wow.
Cool.
That is, that's pretty amazing. Um, so I mean, you're you're doing that, you're actually doing the job. And but you're, I'm assuming as a fellow, you didn't have to take the F side, which is what you're doing now, essentially preparing.
So we do, we do have the uh very similar testing, but I would say at a smaller scale.
Okay.
So we, we do have some, we do something like the FSO, the FSO T, you know, the multiple choice, the functional part, the. History, the English writing, we do write a a memo. Um, does part of the exam. Once you pass that, you know, I I would say that the main difference is that. Uh, everything is done in one shot, right? So you apply, you present your. Your personal narratives and if if you pass that session, you actually then go do the the episode, the. Writing test, which includes the multiple choice in all the areas that we that I just mentioned. And if you pass that, they, so so it's a whole day thing, right? If you pass that, then they tell you, okay, please stay longer and you're gonna go to a oral assessment. Yeah. Um, the only thing that uh we do not have is the, I think the project manage, the the case management.
Mm hmm.
But yeah, so it is in a smaller scale that I think it does prepare us to do the um. The FSO T, you know, to take the FSO T. Um, but still, you know, it is, the FSO Ts, I would call it the, it's the same thing in asteroids.
That is awesome. Um.
I have a question, Travis, if possible, if I if I okay, if I'm fine. Um, so um. So how did you apply? How did you find out about this position?
USA jobs. USA jobs. So the fellow, the fellow, the counselor fellows have one characteristic and is that. It is based on your language skills. So for example. I am uh a native speaker of Spanish, right? So they are counselor fellows for Portuguese, counselor fellows for. Um, Arabic, counselor fellows for Chinese and Russian.
He's, yeah, in Arabic, yeah, I see that now. I'm gonna share my screen just so um, we can at least. Put something to what you're saying, which is amazing. I'm also glad you shared this.
Yeah, thank you. Um, but yes, so it's been a very interesting experience. Um, you know. The, yeah, I mean, for me, it has been great exposure to, you know. The the Department of State um in general, so.
Thank you so much for sharing. Thank you.
On down.
And uh Travis, you know that there was a position, a immense source officer recently announced?
Yes, uh, I did and I saw, um, but that is, that is a, all of us call an officer their specialist. And um, so yeah, I attended that that session and I I learned a little bit more about it. Um. Yeah, I I definitely had questions because I was like, hey, you know, been in HR. I can do HR there as well, uh, but I I know long term, I know I want to be. If 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 I can prove myself to be an ambassador and 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 a good leader, then I would like to uh go that path and. I knew, I knew that confining myself to to just only HR versus operations. Of of an embassy that wouldn't give me the exposure that I would need long term for my career.
That's true, but that's the one way to get into your foot, you know, inside and then it's easy to. With passing foreign service exam, it's easy to, you know, move forward.
For sure. Is that something you're interested in? You're doing that?
Yeah, yeah, uh, actually, I have uh uh I have uh worked before in embassy as well. And uh in outside mission as well. So, uh, but right now I'm um. I'm working in USA ID, so and for for Ruben, I would suggest there. We heard that contact, there's a very uh lot of need for contracting officers. So you should try and, you know, for the contracting officer position.
Mohammed, thank you so much. Who, where you said, where should I check? USA ID?
USA ID, you know.
Okay, thank you so much. Definitely, I'll check it out.
Yeah, there are different mechanisms as well, so uh, you know, um, and there's a shortage actually for contracting officers.
Is is that it right there? The foreign service contracting officer?
Yeah.
Starting at seventy, permanent full time. Here, I'll um, I'll I'll share the link.
Please, thank you so much, guys. Thanks.
Yeah, so so coming back to Travis, you, so uh, I know you uh, you know, you're looking, but. This is easiest way, you know, to uh, the people you already know when you are inside. So it's easy to, you know, um, uh, to move forward. Uh, that's always happen in Department of State.
Good to know. Yeah, um. I really appreciate you for for sharing that and it's and it's amazing to see that these roles, I mean, that they're still here, they're still posted. I was thinking that they were not going to be posted until the the day of the test. Or so, with with the day of the application, uh, which is five weeks prior to the test, which is what I read on the state website. So and and some of these are. Have have, they have different pay and and rates, so I'm not sure why, but um, I will apply. When when it's time and we get started with that. So just for the sake of time, because I. Hopefully, I I wanted this one to be a little short, shorter today. Um, it is, if I hear, I'll share, since it's still up here, close. Um, I use Evernote, this is basically my brain on. On a computer, uh, and every note that I have, every everything that I think of, so. Uh, just looking at the actual six narratives from twenty twenty one, to my understanding, they're the same there. Um, I'm also a part of the Foreign Service Compass, uh, the FSO Compass. Which is a self-paced course, uh, that um. Not course, but e-learning uh training program, paying fifteen dollars a month for it, uh, just to get into it and. Um, and and kind of follow along right now. And I'm not, I'm not affiliated with them as far as like, you know, selling it or anything like that. Um, but they are. Also doing a personal narrative challenge right now, which I'll just share the entire screen. Doctor Erna, good to see you.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. I appreciate it.
No problem at all. Thank you for for joining. We were just having a conversation about um. Well, you know, prior to us getting started, um, the. Counselor fellow, the actual application itself, where to find uh different roles, including the contract. Contracting roles, which is on the USA jobs. And I was just sharing about the Foreign Service uh Compass. Uh, which is what, one of the tools that I'm using and right now they're having um. A personal narrative challenge. So anybody who wants to like join it or 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 jump in. And share challenges and was share your your feedback uh on your personal narrative and also get feedback, then this is definitely a good program. This is something that um. And it's not just about personal narratives, obviously, it's also about the different aspects of the of the uh of the F side, which is the like US government. US history and more. So that's something that I'm constantly constantly digging in. I've officially finished um this entire program, so. I will be moving on this um incoming week to the study books. So um, for from my wedding anniversary, my wife actually got these for me. Uh, so I'm very, I have no idea how much they cost, I might have to look just so I can thank her. But I appreciate her for getting them for me because she knows how serious I pay this, so. I'll be digging in both and I'll share what I know and we will take this test in October. Um.
How was the program?
It's good. It's really good. I really, I really enjoyed it. Um, yeah, I I finished it Friday, so. I definitely feel more ready than before. So I I I learned very soon that if I was, and and I think I said in in one of the previous sessions. Um, if if I was responsible and I'm a, I'm a, I am a current US citizen. If I was responsible for becoming a US citizen right now, I don't know if I would pass. That's me saying this like retrospectively, maybe six weeks ago. I was like, I I had no idea about a lot of these things. I learned so much about the Civil War, learned so so much about our our government and different perspectives, so.
So you recommend it.
Yeah, I definitely will. I definitely would. And and I'll share that link in the chat as well. I am not paid on any of these referrals. It's, oh, actually, don't use that link, use this one. There you go. Um, this is just. They're trying to share resource. So, all right, getting into our session, it's seven twenty three. I was hoping it is seven, it's seven thirty. I'm not gonna rush. Um, but if we end before uh the the top of the hour at eight, then we will. So actually going into the prompt, I've been testing myself and 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 just to kind of recap, you don't have to, I mean, join these sessions. You don't necessarily need to be up to date in order to join the first one or join your first one. Um, I will say. That it it helps to kind of have uh some insight into it, but. What we did in the, in in one of the most recent sessions was a brainstorm session. Which is actually taking your resume and digging through your resume, not just your professional, your your professional resume, but also your personal resume. Including any community uh activity and and services you've done, even including things that you've done in your home. And going through each thing, each project, each uh item and finding something that you. Could contribute your um, your personal narratives to. So I know for me, there's a lot of projects I've worked on, a lot of cases I've worked on, a lot of uh particular items I've worked on. And as it pertains to leadership, interpersonal skills. Communication skills, management skills, intellectual skills. Uh, I know that in 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 those sectors or if I've, as I've been calling them. Um, lens of experience, I've been able to view certain aspects of my own history. And write out in bullet point form, uh, plenty of examples that I could use. The links aren't working, I click and add it to the browser. Da 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 da. If you Google um FSO Compass. It should come up. No problem. Let's see, just a, let's see. Yeah, FSO Compass. And it's probably just because it was a link directly to, yep. Yes, man. Yep, you got it. Part because it was a link uh directly to one of the resources instead like the landing page, but yeah, uh. The guy, he really did a good job and and his team. Getting out of these resources. Okay, so. Quick thirty second recap, you can do this in your own time to prepare. Uh, a lot of people have been saying that they have completely uh felt. Like their, the brain was frozen, trying to think of what in the world can I write about. In their personal narratives, they have so many experiences, but they don't feel like any of them qualify. They all qualify. I shared in one of the previous sessions, uh, please uh go through and and look for the links. I'm looking for a way to consolidate them and and have them in one place, but I did record the previous sessions. And uh, I was able to share personal narratives that were able to be accomplished and get that person through. And it uh, and it was presented in two thousand twenty one. Um, and they're pretty good, so. One thing I, one significant thing that I noticed was that they weren't all about professional experience. One of them was just about. Uh, how a person communicated, how like what they did in their household as a leader. And I thought it was very, very amazing. So, your own time, go through your your resume. Professional, personal, community and and more, um, and and work through every project you've done, just bullet point them and then. You can use those to create your, your ammo essentially for your personal narratives. Like whatever you've done in leadership, whatever you've done in inter interpersonal skills, whatever you've done in communication skills, management skills, intellectual skills. Uh, now, for this one. The question typically is, I'm not saying it's not a right or wrong answer, they mostly just want to see how you communicate and what is your why. They want to see why, why are you, like, why do you want to be an officer? So um, that's that's something that you really just have to answer for yourself. But digging today, we're going to look at uh one of these questions here, so. The Foreign Service, the Foreign Service seeks a diverse workforce with broad skills. And depth of experience to represent the United States overseas. Briefly describe again your why. Um, why choose the career track you selected and in what bring you to the, to this career track? So this is that uh substantive knowledge question. The rest, the rest of these are a little bit more precise and although this is a hundred percent your personal answer. These are the ones where you really need to dig into your history and present. Again, they don't know. What you've done, what you haven't done. This is mainly about how you communicate, how you show leadership, how you think. Uh, this is definitely one of those things where you can really make a difference just by. Communicating it in thirteen hundred characters or less. So, and as it pertains to intellectual skills, this is an actual prompt from twenty twenty one. And and this is the only one that we're gonna do today and then we will uh conclude. Next session, we will start from the top and uh of interpersonal skills and we'll spend a little bit more time in. Hopefully, you can actually write your real, your real interpersonal skill, uh, prompt, personal narrative, based on a prompt. Uh, and you will have it ready for the twelfth of August, which is when the application is open. For this upcoming testing session. So um, this is more so just to kind of get you warmed up and thinking about it. So, in in the Foreign Service, you will confront challenging situations that require identifying the problem. Collecting relevant information and formulating or advancing innovative solutions to resolve the problem. The question. Describe a time when you responded innovatively to. Unanticipated circumstances to solve a problem. Simple question, right? Include the following elements in your responses, the actual situation, steps you took to think through the situation. And how you, how your actions addressed the situation, what were the results? Intellectual skills, information gathering and analysis, critical thinking, active learning, leadership and management training. Uh, and just like we shared in previous videos, or I've shared in previous videos, the STAR L method. Is the way you want to go with responding to these. Um, just to humanize this situation a little bit more, it's kind of like one of those situations where you're talking to someone and. You're waiting for them to get to the point of the story and just like. You know, ta- start with here and then tell me the rest of it, you know, to kind of get that person engaged. When you are working in a real life scenario, at in 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 a case where you do have stakeholders. Uh, or different leaders in in tact are involved, I think it's important to respect people's time, as I want to respect your time today. And go ahead and tell them exactly what they're looking for in a format that they will, that that they will be easily. And able to digest that information. So I'm not gonna put anyone on the spot today. Uh, next session, we will definitely, it will will spend the remaining thirty minutes sharing. Our. Live personal narratives, but today. More so, I'm gonna share my thinking as far as the Stario method when it comes to this question intellectually. So. Maybe starting with the. Star L method, if I'm not. Let me see, one moment. And this is, if if you're new to um, Evernote, this is just a a note-taking platform. This is just. My brain, I I just put everything in there. And this is a small session, so you can come off mute if you have any thoughts, any questions, uh, anything you want to include. Um, by no shape or form am I the most knowledgeable about all of this. I'm learning this with you. This is a study session. Um, I just prepare moments before or here lately every week. Um, all throughout the week, so I can properly present to you and facilitate the training. Which uh definitely opens up the invitation if anyone else wants to facilitate or teach it o- on a Sunday. All right. So we got another person jumping in. Where's the STAR L? This is how you know you have too many notes when you just can't. Quickly identify. Hello, Elizabeth.
Hello, everyone.
We are, um, I'm actually looking for one of my previous notes, using the Stario method. To compose my response for one personal narrative. I definitely recommend uh anyone who wants to. Use it to also use his time to write out their personal narrative as well. Not fully, you you don't have to have it all together. This is not that session today. This is more so looking at real personal narratives, real responses and going through the process of what it looks like to create it. Okay, I do not know where my note is. I thought I had it. At a quick glance. And I don't, so actually, I can just type here. So I used to lean in on my phone. I don't, still don't see it. I still don't see it. I see that it could be. I don't see it. Moving on, from from that, from that, and I'm just gonna, just grab the actual. Method from the internet, because I don't want to waste your time. STAR L. Method. Sure. Yeah, all right, and just for easy view. Again, just working through what it looks like to actually put one together. You know, it's funny, I actually just saw where the note is. I I thought I had that in, in there, but it's in here instead. There it is, okay. Star L method. I'm gonna post the question. And I'm going to share. The framework that I'm gonna use to answer it. So it's easier to see. Describe. So this is the actual question here. No, excuse me. Let's go yellow. Describe a time when you responded innovatively to an unanticipated circumstance to solve a problem. Immediately thinking about. When. I was working with a company. To help them with um sexual harassment training. Uh, they did not have uh proper sexual harassment training and one of, and one of the leaders. Which they should have felt safe around, they um. They were not able to go to him because he was actually part of the problem. Uh, I was brought in on a, on a project to. Not only customize uh training, but also figure out. Who were potential, uh, let me say victims of this guy's reckless behavior. So the situation, set the scene by describing the context or background of your story. Next thing I'm gonna do is the task, outline this the specific challenge or problem that I faced. This highlights the purpose of the goal in the story. So if I was to write that out and. And I'm still personally finding a challenge with. So if I was to write that out and and I'm still personally finding a challenge with getting this under thirteen hundred characters, but. And I have so many stories that I can actually share, but I will start with the situation. As I verbally shared it. I. I can tell you right now that although I'm I'm starting out in a passive tone by that that there was a leader. I needed to, I need to actively write in present tone, and I know that that's what. Uh, they're looking for and as far as inactive tone and present tones. So this is also, so this is already something that I'm I'm gonna need to correct. And what I'll do is I'll go back and 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 make it add a tone. In addition to that, I also see just starting out that I'm using extra words, I don't need to. I've recently learned uh a term from Mark Twain. Five dollar words, I don't know if anyone has heard that term before. The goal is to avoid um anything that's at a level that's not going to be. Uh, generally spoken to an audience that doesn't know exactly what you do in your career, in your situation, in your community. So, finding ways to, you know, what what's the term of it, if you can. I- i- if the book or or statement could be read to a fifth grader, then it's accomplished. So being able to use word choices that are at a level that a general population can receive. But already using, uh, I I've seen that I've used overlapped, o- overlapping terms. And this is probably a way I can save that thirteen hundred characters. So there was a company, you know, that there was a leader in the company that was over training specifically sexual harassment training, I said training twice. So, I've set the situation, I've outlined the the actual challenge. The action, explain your steps and your decision to address the task. This demonstrates your ability, so your approach and skills and uh dealing with the situation. The result, so and and I feel like I can dive a little deeper into the action, uh, because there were several steps that I did take. So, um. Just now, just just I'm sharing my thinking. Um, I was gonna say, I met with the men and women, thinking how many characters that is. First thing I need to do is find a way to reduce and just again, speaking objectively, I met with the employees. I met with all of the employees. In a format. Of asking. What food? Each wanted catered. Or gift card. They wanted uh for a town hall. Company meeting. Doing this. Survey. Gains me fifteen minutes. Probably to assess. The circumstance. Already identified a problem that I'm gonna have, I need to completely turn off uh. Anything that's gonna help me spell. I need to be able to spell this in real time correctly, and this is also something that they're gonna be judging. So, I'm not gonna have any assistance by any artificial intelligence. Uh, so and I need to be able to do this, I need to find a way to to turn that off or even just use a a standard note. Or um a Microsoft Word and just decline it in any other assistance. Uh, doing the survey, give me fifteen minute privately to assess the circumstances of. Meetings. I'm just gonna say interactions. With the leader. Accused. Leader, okay, what's the what's the result in learning? Share the actions outcome emphasizing the impact and positive change you made. This provides tangible evidence of your accomplishments. Uh, in course learning, reflect on your experience, share the lesson you you learned. Who wrote this? Um, how they have shaped your personal and professional growth. And how these lessons connect your career track, okay? So, the result. After. Meeting. With everyone. Um, I was able to. Uh, successfully. I'm trying to find. Real. Calls for. Determination and avoid. Legal. Embarrassment to the. Employees and companies. Reputation. The learn, the learning, so what's the lesson? Uh. In management, so let me, let me make sure I bring it full circle. This is intellectual skills. So, the question was, describe a time where you responded innovatively to in in to an unanticipated circumstance to solve a problem. I learned. That. Employees of all backgrounds. I feel like I'm, I feel like I'm writing down about to go over thirteen hundred characters, but we'll check it here in a moment. Uh. I learned that employees. Of any. Gender. Can be. Challenged. And. Every employee. Vendor and customer. Deserves. Fair and. Treatment. Okay. Again, not gonna have any artificial intelligence. Let's see the damage, let's see how much I'm I may be over or or under, so tools. Go to word count. I'm actually under. Um, usually I'm one hundred percent over, and if you see the last video that I did. I was, I was over by, I forgot, like a hundred or two hundred. So I'm actually under, um, I did a hundred sixty-two words, uh, one hundred and one. Characters, the goal is, so also something interesting here, characters excluding spaces. So if there were no spaces, it would also be eight hundred and thirty-nine. Now, this is a way that you can actually immediately judge yourself and decide. Does this story make sense and do I need to go back and add any more context to it? Now, um. It does not matter that I have published five books. I am constantly finding ways to improve my writing, I do not consider myself the best writer of them all. I would like for you, um, Sandra Mohammed Rubin, Dr. Erna and Elizabeth to judge. This, this narrative as it relates to the star L method. And did I actually answer the question? So, I'm gonna read it through quickly. Intellectual skills and the form service, you will confront challenges situations that require identifying the problem, collecting relevant information. And formulating and advancing innovative solutions to resolve the problem. Describe a time when you responded innovatively to unanticipated circumstances to solve a problem. Include the following elements in your response, the situation, steps you took to to think through the situation. And how your actions addressed the situation, what the, what were the results? The intellectual skills needed here are information gathering, analysis, critical thinking, active learning. Leadership and management training. Using a story on method, what is the situation, what is the task? What are the actions, what are the result? And reflect on it, what is the learning experience? Um, I'm gonna stop talking. And let's read, anyone, you can just come off mute and share your thoughts. Sorry, I'm I'm actively correcting myself, I'm terribly good, I always do it. I'm muted, alright, I'm a problem, I'm closing.
So are we just giving you input and then?
So.
I was talking at the same time, I'll go on mute.
I'm ready.
Alright, very quick, um, so I think that it is very interesting, actually. Uh, so it took me a little longer to read, but I was wondering, so the the S stands, star stands for what, I'm sorry?
Situation.
Situation, okay, um, so I imagine that in like in this case, you also have to explain what the. So it seems like there is a problem, and I think. The problem is not very clear at the beginning, like the problem that you were called to resolve. Because it says there was a leader of a company that was responsible for training employees. Um, specifically in sexual harassment. But what happened, what was, so that I think that there, there's like a link, a link missing between that sentence and your first action, explaining why you have to do that.
I can see that.
Um, and I think it doesn't have to be long, you know, ob- obviously, um, it's, this is just an opinion.
That's a good opinion, and I I I actually do agree with that. Um, and and I think as a writer. Because I knew I was there, I know what the problem.
Exactly.
But you don't know, so yeah, I was brought in to discover who may have been victimized by the leader.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but I I agree with you, I could add a little bit more context there.
Mm-hmm.
And I might actually use this. And uh, context, thank you.
Yeah, it was, uh, this is Ruben, it was a very good comment, Sandra, uh, because I I spent some time to understand. Trying to understand what is the problem, this situation, the first, very first. Um, uh, statement, so it wasn't clear, what are we trying to do, where is the problem, what's the situation? Now, by making this a little bit more clear, by just adding few, one sentence, probably, it's going to be clear for us, what's the problem? Yeah, so very good point, Sandra, and everything else, it looks like you cover. You explain and cover the main uh, the main points, including. You explain and cover the main, the main points, including that task, action, result. Perhaps maybe something learning, you can put something as well to, to see what was the, what, what did you learn from that experience? But specifically the situation, I agree with Sandra that it wasn't clear. That's why I read it a few times to understand the problem.
I appreciate that wholeheartedly. And, and I can see that as well. So yeah, I'm definitely wanna see if I can add some context here. As I was reading it, I realized, gosh, I really only gave one sentence to the situation. And, and this one is the one sentence toward the task. So actually labeling them. Yeah, so at a quick glance, hey, I made a, I made a personal narrative, but yeah, definitely need some more, some more in there.
But Travis, to motivate you, excellent job. Oh my gosh, real time, you are typing, you're thinking about the problem, you're typing and you did your narrative. That's very impressive. Wow, good, excellent work. Wow.
Tell me where to send the check. I appreciate the compliment. No, but no, seriously, I appreciate the challenge. I need to, I need to improve it and do exactly what I was saying, you said, and what you identified too.
So this is Elizabeth, well Lisa, and I was gonna say a similar thing, actually, so it just wasn't clear. Like I feel like you have it all there. I, I don't know if, and I will echo what I think it was Ruben said, like kudos for doing this right here in real time and getting this out here. Yes, there's, I'm, I'm learning to love the rough drafts and to, you know, not be attached to them, not being perfect kind of first time around. But yeah, kudos to doing this and doing this in front of us. I think that I am, cause as I was thinking through how I wanna do, do mine, I don't know if this will make a difference. I wonder if, cause I know you were very concerned about getting it in the space, you know, under that expected count. I wonder if, and this, this might not work, but what I was thinking I was gonna do for myself was more like maybe write out the whole thing. Just write it out and not worry about count and then edit it down.
And then go, yeah.
That helps me at least because it makes sure that I put everything on there, even though, you know, it is still always hard to get it down. You, you mentioned Mark Twain earlier and I think he's also, he was one who was quoted by saying, I didn't have time to write you a short letter, so I wrote you a long one, cause it is harder to write short. It is definitely harder to get it to be tight, but I think it might be easier to write it all first and then tweak from there so that you, that way, you know, you can decide what's important and what to keep. Cause I think, I would also say, I think for me, it's not just the beginning that's not clear, like I'm not clear why like the food choice was important. It seemed like you were asking people for food choices as a way to get private time with them to ask them about the leader. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, cause that wasn't super clear as well. I think yeah, I, I, if anything, I think I would probably totally unsolicited advice, but maybe write it all out and then strip it from there because I think in your attempt for brevity, it would be good to have a little bit more clarity. And even with the leader of a company, it could be, there was a vice president of a company for which I was the HR bub, bub, bub. Like why are you the one that you were being called in? Like that's not clear. What was your role?
Yeah, that is important, isn't it?
You know, and it's like, was he a, was he a trainer? Like, does it matter that he was a trainer or does it matter that he was sexually harassing? I don't know that it matters what he does. What matters is like there was a VP who was accused of sexual harassment. That's what matters. It doesn't actually matter what the VP's job is, but VP connotes leader and sexual harassment is the problem. We don't really need to know what his title is. Unless it's really important, but I, I don't, I don't know that it is in this case. So I think it's trying to figure out what are the little things that say a lot? So that, you know, what we need is clear, like, yeah, why were you the person doing it? Because you talking about food now throws me off, like what's your role? Why is food like your issue? So, yeah, so yes, I think that kind of brought up questions for me. Not to say that that's not what you did, but it probably is helpful to know what your role was, what that person's role was.
Oh yeah, I didn't connect that well.
Yeah, so.
For sure. Thank you. It's totally solicited. So I appreciate it. Okay, so to keep my promise, the time right now is eight oh four. I do thank the, thank each of you for the feedback. And thank you for allowing me the space to be vulnerable and show you my thinking, but also show the Star L method in, in real time, although I need to develop it. This is more so, I, I receive the fine tuning and actually crafting the story and revising it. So I will definitely work on that. Next week, we will go deeper into the, into the next prompt. May situation or the main takeaway and goal here, where is the prompt posting? The main goal of what we're looking for is to just be ready for our applications. So.
I think Erna wants to say something.
Oh, well, yeah, never mind because you already switched the page. I was gonna say you did convey like how you intended to meet with everyone. It's just that the sentence is clear, it's just you could have used a word or two to like join the sentences. For instance, let's say you say that doing this survey gave me fifteen minutes private to, cause you said it, you, you did this survey as a way to gain fifteen minutes privately. And then you said after meeting with everyone, so you could have just put like as a way to meet with everyone to get that information. So you actually are conveying by saying that you use that secret, secretly, but you could have just used like some a way to like join the sentences where in that sentence you can just clarify it better. So that we know that that was the intent behind meeting with everyone secretly for fifteen minutes.
That makes sense.
Yeah, cause sometime we can shorten our sentences by using certain, like, you know how you use the word as, I, I'm, English isn't my first language because I'm multilingual, but I forgot how you call them. You use those word as because those things like that. So certain wording can help to clarify your sentences when you, you know, do your, like formulate it better. So how you, your choice of words, I would say.
And I think they are.
Yes, that's the thing. I wasn't sure. I didn't wanna say it because. These are the words, yeah, conjunctions and stuff. So those really help to shorten your sentences, but to also clarify the meaning behind it. If you use your like subject verb and stuff like that, so the way you formulate them makes a difference. So you convey what you're trying to say in a more clear manner.
Incisive, yeah, I totally agree. And I feel like just even looking at it, they're just, almost disconnected from each other.
Yes, yes, exactly. So I understood it, cause I create papers, I deal with students all the time, but then when you, when you have those and it's like, oh yeah. So it's like you're relating it. This one is like you said a full sentence. I mean, you don't wanna have run on sentences, so the sentences can't be too long. But even with that, there's also a way to kind of let me should it connect so that you know that you're referring to the same thing, that you, you continuing what you're trying to say.
Who knows who y'all, y'all are amazing. So this is all for you. I'm, I'm throwing up all the celebratory.
That's for you for doing this. Right back to you.
Right back to you.
Yeah, thank you, right?
Y'all are incredible. Okay, please come back. Next, next week, I'm, I'm gonna get out of, out of the hot seat and share. I will share this.
The reminders help, by the way. So when you tell us to please come back, you know how life be life things. So when you said the reminders, cause I got a knock, yeah, today. So I was able to put an alarm because I got the reminder a little bit ahead of time. So that helps. If that's not too much, you know, to continue doing so, so that we're able to jump on.
A hundred percent. If I go ahead and send it for, I'll send it tonight for, for next Sunday.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, and, yeah, and Ruben, thank you for your communication. Let me know that, hey, I may not be home in time, but I will join. I may not be verbal. I, I appreciate you letting me know. And, and either way, I appreciate you each for and including those who may be watching this later because like you say, like, like lives. You maybe want to just watch the replay. I will post it immediately after. So I probably say like, give like an hour or two and YouTube will let it, let it fully load. These videos are private, so anyone with a link can see it. But it's not public on my YouTube channel. So your, anything you share verbally is not just shared with anyone, only to people who are specifically in this group and who are attempting to become future diplomats. So thank you, each of you. Next week, we're gonna be diving deeper into the personal narratives. We're gonna be ready for August twelfth. We're gonna, we're gonna make it happen. I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop the recording, stop presenting. Stop recording. Okay, there we go.